All right. We're rolling.
Okay.
Good morning. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is my first time in the big chair, so bear with me.
Start your questions now.
Debbie, would you?
First item.
Chair, read the first item.
Sure.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting on January 30th, 2014.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Aye.
Aye. Go ahead and read the second one as well.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting on February 4th, 2014.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner's meeting.
Aye.
Aye. Item three, the financials, and I will -- Heidi, you had the nerve to go to Florida this week, what she was thinking.
I didn't even want to ask. I knew it was former's bar.
Yeah, so I will give you the highlights of the financials. They include a supplemental appropriation to increase contract services per Board Resolution 14-11A for the Metzenbaum Fund, a cash transfer out of the general fund for 2014 funding for the construction of an office addition for the county engineer pursuant to an MOU dated 12/5/13, encumbrances for water resources in the amount of $32,557.75 to Business Smarts for an HP server and NAS equipment, and $41,727.40 to Burgland Associates for updated telemetry equipment, travel requests for the common police court, Department of Emergency Services and the recorder, a payment to Troomo County in the amount of $57,449.31 for Court of Appeals cost allocation, and a payment from the Board of Development on Disabilities in the amount of $85,185.40 to Goss Chalk Building Company for pay request number four on construction of the ICF renovation.
I'll make that motion.
Well, we got to read it first.
Oh.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute Resolution 14-019, itemizing the financials for the meeting on February 11th, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner's meeting.
Aye.
Aye.
Right, so neat.
Please bear with me.
You'll get like, after a while you get this.
Somebody said that I was the only one that could read the name, so.
I can read mine.
I'm going to work on that. I'm going to work on it, so it's just a scribble.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you guys?
Fine.
Okay, we would love to advertise in the Maplewood on Thursday for this year's grant for our Fairgrounds project, and it has to be advertised for seven days, and then after that we'll come back on the 25th and request to release the funds for that project.
All right. Debbie, you want to read that?
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board grant permission to advertise the notice of intent to request a release of funds in regards to the Community Development Block Grant in regards to the Fairgrounds project under grant number B-F-13-1-AZ-1 to be advertised on February 13th, 2014.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner's meeting.
Aye.
Thank you.
Nothing to sign?
No.
Another.
I don't want to sign this one either.
Good morning.
I was just getting hanging.
He's real.
This is another real.
We can use the red button. He's like Ma, he writes his, everything's even better.
What comments we will be very gentle. Oh, okay, this is just the standard housekeeping. We always have two public hearings for any grant. This is a first public hearing that covers anything we would possibly apply for. So it's just asking permission to allow us to put the ad in the paper for Thursday with the projects that we could possibly apply for. So the standard formula, which is what Kristen was just talking about from last year, but this would be for any grants we would apply this year. This will take care of the general, and then if you pick one that we want to apply for, we'd have another one specific to that grant.
All right, thank you.
Fair.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board grant permission to advertise for public hearing number one for the FY 2014 Community Development Block Grant programs to be held February 25th, 2014 at 10:30 a.m. Notice of this public hearing will be advertised on February 13th, 2014 and on the county website.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner's meeting.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
County Home, that's done already?
Yeah.
Yes.
Karen could not be here, so I'm going to explain this one. Ms. Hegner, her resignation has been, or acceptance resignation has been requested here. She's a part-time attendant. She's also a student, and apparently this was getting in the way of.
Study.
Study, so she tried, but it's just not going to work at this time, so that's why she's resigned.
Thank you. Debbie, would you read number six?
The County Home is requesting the Board accept the resignation of Molly Hegner, part-time attendant, number 1504-1, to be effective February 12th, 2014.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner's meeting.
Aye.
Aye. Here with me, this we have.
County engineer.
County engineer, okay. It's not the public hearing yet. Morning, Joe.
Good morning, how you doing?
Let you know, I'm going to back you on that.
His medium.
Well, I'm doing well if you're asking. First item I have on the agenda here is the annual 33 percent reduction to all county and township roads for frost laws per Section 557707 of Ohio Revised Code. While we do get a blanket resolution from you to allow us to put those reductions on, we only do it on the roads we see necessary and we post as such. They're only enforceable if they're posted. You know, we have some roads out there that have quite a bit of base on them, cement stabilized subbase, and a lot of asphalt on them that the frost and the trucks don't really affect, so we don't post those, so we are sparing with what we post purposefully to not cause hardship. But that's what that is.
All right, thank you. Debbie, would you read number seven, please?
The county engineer's office is requesting the Board approve the reduction by 33 percent to the maximum load limit permitted on all county and township roads effective February 14th, 2014, in accordance with Section 5577.07 of the Ohio Revised Code. This reduction is necessary to minimize damage to the roads during periods of freeze and thaw and excessive moisture.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner's meeting.
Aye.
Aye. Next item is a hearing at 10:20. We're a little ahead of that.
Yeah, so skip through a couple of them here.
I'm thinking that we have one at 10:25. Next one is Sheriff's Office, number 10. Is that pretty quick?
Yeah.
Yes.
We'll skip over these two that have a timeline on them and bring the sheriff and chief deputy.
Just a mere shadow of his former self.
Yes, sir.
Become the board commissioners today with our inmate home contract. Little bit of background, inmates can make telephone calls at the jail to friends, family, and this is done through a vendor. The vendor maintains the electronics, the equipment, the phone, the computer provides the recording devices that we need for monitoring of those calls, as well as pays the rate, long distance or otherwise, for the use of the phones. To be permitted access to the county building, to do this, the vendor will, last year, paid to the county general fund $28,000, and $20,000 went to the inmate commissary account. Inmate commissary account is, basically, it's proceeds from items we sell inmates, anything from, obviously, the phone cards, to candy bars, to coffee, things of that nature, and the proceeds from that, by statute, can only be used for benefit to the inmates. So we use that money to provide educational materials for our GED programs, for our counseling programs, remedial educational programs, and things of that nature.
So the inmates or their families are the ones that pay for this by buying the prepaid cards and so on?
Yes. One of the things that we're going to do this year to streamline and make it easier, the vendor's going to put a kiosk in the lobby.
Oh, so they can actually buy it.
Where you're able to come in and make the purchase, and then electronically, it will be credited to an inmate's phone account, so we're not handling, make it more efficient for them.
It's all done on Visa cards and things.
Thank you very much.
Not on our Visa though.
Debbie, would you read number 10, please?
The sheriff's office is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute a two-year combined public communications inmate telephone communications general service agreement to provide inmate telephone services at the Jock County Safety Center located at 12450 Merritt Drive, Shart.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner's meeting.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're still early.
We're still five minutes ahead of time.
So do the next one.
Go to the Maximus one, the next one?
Yeah, the number 11.
Number 11. I'll explain this briefly.
Okay.
This is a cost allocation study that's done every year for the county. This is last year's study. You pay $11,000, the law has not changed, we did the study, and what this is doing is it analyzes services that are provided by county departments for non-general fund entities. It started with JFS, federal law allowed for local counties to charge their jobs and family services departments for the work, the administrative work that's done on their behalf by departments that are paid out of the general fund, for example, the auditor's office, doing all their checks and whatnot, and their payroll, prosecutor's office representing them, the work that this office does in processing this program, and similarly, other departments that are funded through special revenue sources are assessed. This study shows what they should all pay. Now, sometimes by law, they don't pay what this study would indicate they should pay, so we don't collect everything that this document concludes the general fund should be reimbursed, but we do collect what we can. And so, I think it's around $400,000 a year it's up to now for cost allocation. That is then paid back to the general fund to offset the costs of providing the services for departments that are funded by other sources.
That's a good thing.
Thank you. Debbie, would you please read 11?
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute an agreement to provide professional consulting services with Maximus Consulting Services Incorporated for services rendered in the development of the county's central services cost allocation plan for the year 2014 in the amount of $11,000.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner's meeting.
Aye.
And Commissioner.
Aye. We can go to the next one. 12's real quick, you want to read that one?
Sure. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and authorize the Vice President of the Board to execute an agreement for snow storage with Clemson Excavator Incorporated at county-owned property located at 223 Center Street from February 7th, 2014 through April 30th, 2014.
They're going to store the snow for the summer.
We'll use it later.
Going to use it later when it gets really hot out here. We're going to spread it around.
Because I understand this is, this is snow that was built up at the library, county library's parking lot, piled up to a point where they can't push it anymore, they got to get it. They can't get through and so on, so.
Since we don't have a lake or a river close by.
So they have a contractor that hauls it away, but.
Then we can bring it out.
We're providing for them to put that there, at that location.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner's meeting.
Aye.
And Commissioner.
Aye. Close enough for 10:20?
Yeah.
I think so. Brings us back to the public hearing that is scheduled for 10:20. Number eight on the agenda.
I make a motion to waive the reading of the ad in the paper.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
This particular project is just the asphalt resurfacing of Bainbridge Road. This would include all of Bainbridge Road, both sections east and west of 306, except for the tiny little spot by 306 that the state did some work at the intersection and came back in a few hundred feet. Obviously, that doesn't need to be done. We're going to mill the surface off what's there and then just overlay it, so we'll maintain traffic during the, there won't be any, it won't be closed through traffic. All in all, it should just take a couple weeks to perform the work, so the disruption's very minimal. The reason there's a hearing is because there is federal money involved. We're getting $640,000 from NOACCA.
Right.
Now, do you have a date about when this would take place?
Yeah, well, this particular one was funded through NOACCA for fiscal year '15, but with the money that they have adding up that either has been not spent or turned back, it looks like it'll probably get thrown into '14. Their fiscal year starts on July 1, so technically, July 1 is what this is scheduled for after July 1.
After.
There's 15 money, but if we get bumped into '14, we could move it up to whenever we want, so.
Which is great.
Great, and we try to, and it would be good if we could move it up because our construction season's so tight around here, we try to do all the road closures and stuff when school's not in session, and being that traffic's maintained on this, it would make sense to try to put it, you know, before school's out, just because of all the other closures that may happen between us and the state.
So like between June and July, right?
Well, this one, actually, it'd be nice if we could do this in, you know, prior to that, so, yeah.
Oh, that'd be good.
Late April or May, but as of right now, it is funded for fiscal '15, which would be after July 1, which is also true for next year. But we have, we have been told that it most likely will get moved up into '14.
We will. Any questions from the audience at the public hearing?
I got a suggestion on that job. When you go down Chagrin Road, just past Lake Lucerne, there's always a pond of water on that road, and it's tilted a little bit the wrong way. There was a car off the road just the other day, so maybe they could put in fixing that.
I, Chagrin Road?
Yeah, you go down Chagrin Road, past Lake Lucerne, I mean, right past Lake Lucerne, and it's there. And you can't believe how many cars go through that fence over there.
Yeah, I know where you mean.
The road's tilted a little bit wrong.
It tilts a little bit, yeah.
And it fills with water.
I know where you mean.
Yeah, I'll take a look at that, that.
Of course, that's Chagrin Road, right?
Right.
This is Bainbridge Road.
Oh, I thought they were.
Yeah.
No, no, the other side of the freeway, right. With the, once you're set up on a scope and so forth, this couldn't be changed, but that's not to say that I can't create a different, you know, project to remedy any issue that.
Right, or next time you pay it.
Right, absolutely, yeah.
But I know where he speaks of. There is a, okay, want to close the public hearing? How close?
We can close the public hearing on number eight. No, we don't vote.
No.
No, we just go to nine.
Yeah, right.
Number nine is at 10.
Well, you're, you're close.
Yeah, 10:25, we're.
Now you're open with the.
Yeah, would you?
I would make a motion to waive the ad in the paper concerning the public hearing for the asphalt resurfacing of Pettigo Road and Bainbridge Township.
Second.
Commissioner's meeting.
Aye.
And Commissioner.
Aye.
This project is just the asphalt resurfacing of Pettigo Road. As you recall, it used to be, yeah, it's almost out to the county line in Bainbridge. This was a township road, but we acquired it a couple years ago when the new county map was developed, as you recall, and the federal grant on this one is $384,000.
$384,000.
It's also in the same situation. It's fiscal year '15, but we're hoping it'll get moved up into '14.
So the two together, well over a million dollars.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is the full length of Pettigo?
Yes, this is the full length.
Oh, that's a long road. That's, yeah, that's a big one. It kind of goes right down into Solon, doesn't it?
Yeah, it does. The county line kind of catches before 43, you know, where the new shop is, at Parkside Church?
Yeah.
Just beyond Parkside.
Just beyond, yeah.
Yeah, it would be the end of it.
It's a long stretch of road.
Want to say that one was, yeah, I have it shown here, it's 2.7 miles. Yeah, and the Bainbridge one is actually longer, 5.6.
5.6.
Once again, the traffic's maintained during this operation, so it shouldn't be that disruptive. And they, we don't allow work on Sundays except in extreme circumstances, so they won't disrupt. It's pretty disruptive if Parkside gets out anyhow, so if we were there.
Oh, there's so many people there, yeah, that's quite a, that's quite a church.
If there was something, just any way it happens, we won't be there on Sunday.
Are there any comments or discussion on Pettigo Road project? Close the hearing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Good job. $100,000, wow.
That takes us to the item number 13.
Girl Scouts. You could go do all of them.
I was going, that's what I was going to say. I'm questioning whether we go 13, 14, 15, or we just read them all and vote them all at the same time. All of these have to do with approving resolutions for awards for Girl Scouts, and I think it'd be easier just to read them all.
Good luck.
You're not reading the projects?
Oh, yeah, read the projects. Come on, read, read, yeah.
These are Joe's project?
These are Girl Scout projects.
Oh, these are Girl Scout projects. Okay, right.
They do it with these, let me tell you. The Girl Scouts run right through these projects like nobody's business. Bronze, silver, and gold.
Okay. All right. This is a resolution honoring Junior Girl Scout Troop Number 71-399 for achieving the bronze award, the highest honor for a junior girl scout. The project was Junior Girl Scout Troop 71-399 earned their bronze award by tending to the needs and care of Savannah, a rescued short-eared owl with a wing injury housed at the Lake Metro Park's Penitentiary Glen Wildlife Center. The focus of the Junior Girl Scout Troop bronze award was wildlife rehabilitation. Junior Girl Scout Troop 71-399, award recipients are Maggie Adams, Taylor Anderson, Paige Bilu, Lucy Blazek, Aya Carrario, Emily Donovan, Lauren Kostowski, Riley Fisher, Sarah Charick, Cara Casida, Kelsey Leganki, Lauren Lesko, Jenna Piazza, Hallie Prenta, Paige Prenta, Emma Rumbarter, Emma Spencer, Samantha Stevens, Molly Tweaksberry, and Tracy Piazza, and Amy Prenta as leaders. And I apologize if I mispronounced their names.
I would also, we always make sure each girl gets a resolution, so we need resolutions for all those girls, not just one. So I would suggest, you know, printing off one for each girl, and then we could sign them all, because we've always done it that way.
Okay.
And it makes a big difference, because when you're at that event, each girl comes up and they have something that goes, gets to them personally, and then we each, we hand that out to each one. So, not to criticize, but that's just what we've done. I know it's new for you, yeah.
No, I.
And then put them in order, like bronze, and then silver, and then gold. So I would make that motion for all of them.
Second. We'll do these individually.
Commissioner's meeting.
Aye.
And Commissioner.
Aye. This is a resolution honoring Girl Scout Cadet Troop 71-401 for achieving the silver award, the highest honor for a cadet girl scout. The Cadet Scout Troop 71-401 earned their silver award by initiating a week-long campaign in January at Kinston High School to raise awareness to the dangers of texting while driving. Each scout of Cadet Scout Troop 71-401 created a video commercial which aired during the daily high school morning video announcements, culminating with a five-minute mock accident caused by texting and driving, which was created with the cooperation of the Bainbridge Police and Fire Departments. Cadet Scout Troop 71-401 also distributed thumb bands at basketball games to students who signed a banner pledging not to text and drive, and offered driving simulators to students to test their ability to text and drive. Cadet Scout Troop 71-401 award recipients are Juliana Gibler, Alexa Gobble, Nicole Lanis, Alexandra Lesnar, Emily Wood, Maddie Young, and Mary Kay Gibler as leader.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner's meeting.
Aye.
And Commissioner.
Aye. All right. This is a resolution honoring Girl Scout Cadet Troop Number 71-973 for achieving the silver award, the highest honor for a cadet girl scout. Cadet Scout Troop 71-973 earned their silver award by participating in weekly visits to the women's safe shelter to read stories, do crafts, and share snacks with the children. Cadet Troop 71-973 organized a birthday party and special Christmas event for the shelter, including adopting a shelter family. Cadet Troop 71-973 also participated in a women's safe event to raise awareness of domestic violence. Cadet Scout Troop 71-973 award recipients are Gina Artell, Kaylee Fisher, Sidney Henry, Sophia Cussner, Julia Mori, Daniela Salvini, Sarah Richardson, and Jenna Wong, Wong, or Warner, with Dennis Artell and Joanna Warner as leaders.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner's meeting.
Aye.
And Commissioner.
Aye. A resolution honoring Girl Scout Cadet Troop Number 800 for achieving the silver award, the highest honor for a cadet girl scout. Whereas Cadet Scout Troop Number 800 earned their silver award by inspiring, motivating, teaching, and facilitating a lifetime love of reading in young children. Cadet Group Number 800 volunteered many hours tutoring reading at Chagrin Falls. Cadet Group number eight hundred volunteered many hours tutoring reading at Chagrin Falls Park Community Center and Timmons Elementary School, as well as conducted several local area book drives that resulted in the collection of nearly four thousand books, which were delivered to Mary B. Martin Elementary School in Cleveland. Cadet Scout Troop number eight hundred award recipients are Jenna Hamilton, Kennedy Maddie, McKenna Maurer, Elizabeth Portner, Morgan Sephar, Anna Sorrell, Taylor Vargo, and Kimberly Budris, with Carolyn Maurer, Michelle Maddie, and Sherry Vargo as leaders.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Sweetie?
Aye.
Thank Commissioner Moore.
Aye. This resolution honors Girl Scout Cadet Troop number fourteen hundred for achieving the silver award, the highest honor for a cadet girl scout. Cadet Scout Troop number fourteen hundred earned their silver award by conducting a Brownie Badge Day, in which the Girl Scouts guided the Brownies through activities to earn the hiking, and bugs, and first aid badges. Cadet Troop number fourteen hundred researched topics and prepared presentations for games for the younger scouts to enjoy. Cadet Troop fourteen hundred led Brownie Girl Scouts on a hike to explore the wilderness and the nature of the bugs, and taught outdoor safety and first aid. Cadet Scout Troop number fourteen hundred concluded with a group discussion to ensure that the Brownie Scouts fully embraced the knowledge of the badges they had earned. Cadet Scout Troop fourteen hundred award recipients are Mackenzie Bonet, Emma Doyle, Victoria Hammerly, Angela Judge, Delaney Kramer, Sabrina McKellen, Alexis Robertson, and Rachel Stevens, with Debbie Bonet and Kathy McKellen as leaders.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Sweetie?
Aye.
Thank Commissioner Moore.
Aye. Resolution honoring Girl Scout Cadet Troop number eleven for achieving the silver award, the highest honor for a cadet girl scout. Cadet Scout Troop number eleven earned their silver award by enhancing a one-mile walking trail located at Auburn Community Park that Cadet Troop number eleven had previously developed, earning them the bronze award. Cadet Troop number eleven enhanced a trail with a PVC dog waste dispenser bag dispenser, nine-mile markers placed at one-tenth of a mile intervals, laminated tree identification signs, and constructed and installed two benches. Cadet Scout Troop eleven award recipients are Sarah Bennett, Jenna Bornstein, Keenan Garcia, Garcia, I really apologize for that, Matty McKenzie, Emma McGarrix, Ava McCarland, Victoria Pozwick, Charlotte Travick, and Ally Zelman, with Maria Travick, Lisa Bonet, and Carol McGarrix as leaders.
So moved.
Apologize for butchering your names. Resolution, aye. Second. Second.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution honoring Nicole Kovak for achieving the Girl Scout Gold Award, the highest honor in Girl Scouting. Nicole Kovak, for her gold award planned and constructed an agility course for dogs at the Georgia County Dog Shelter using a variety of tools and building materials. Ms. Kovak constructed a course consisting of bar jumps, weave poles, an A-frame ramp, a dog ladder, and kevalete. And through a successful fundraiser, Ms. Kovak was able to purchase a dog tunnel. Ms. Kovak also provided instruction on how to build and properly use each of the agility pieces.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Sweetie?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye. Resolution honoring Rachel Sauter for achieving the Girl Scout Gold Award, the highest honor in Girl Scouting. Rachel Sauter, for her gold award, created the Kenton Arboretum on the Kenton campus after identifying forty-seven distinctive trees across all the school grounds and fitness trail. Ms. Sauter used GPS units to individually mark the coordinates of each tree. Ms. Sauter then transferred this data onto a satellite image map of the Kenton campus and created a brochure highlighting the trees. Ms. Sauter also installed identification signs at the base of each of the trees in the arboretum to be used as a source of continual education, both in the classroom and for those who walk the arboretum trail.
Make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Sweetie?
Aye.
Thank Commissioner Moore.
Aye. And we'll get, yeah, I'll sign all these and then.
And then put that gold medallion on each one, and then put them in a folder, so each one.
We'll have to get a hold of until Commissioner Spitalar is here.
Yeah, get him to sign. So.
So you're saying one more, you're saying one individual resolution for each girl?
Each girl. It's a staff, but believe me, when they're coming up, they're each one, it's real special for them.
But it's.
And then one for the leader, one for the leader, and one for each girl in the group, in the group.
But they're just all getting a copy of that particular resolution?
Well, it probably, yeah.
I don't itemize.
No, not for each name, no, no.
And put them in alphabetical order, because that's the way they come up, by troop, by bronze. Trust me.
She's been there.
When you have a hundred of these things, you're sitting there, and you're hoping they're in alphabetical order, because that's the way they're lined up, too.
Kind of like in Ohio State graduation.
I mean, it's an amazing thing, these.
Ohio State, they graduate how many thousand people, and they hand them their diploma?
Yeah, when I graduated, it was three thousand.
I'm thinking, how do they keep it straight?
I mean, think of the guy that had to shake the hands, I mean.
Well, he is purell.
Oh, the hand, it's broke.
That takes us to item number twenty-one. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board cancel session on Tuesday, February eighteenth due to the President's Day holiday.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Ta-da.
That takes us to acknowledgements and the. Okay. All right, before we get to that, there, I know there are strange or unfamiliar faces here. Did Mouse go through?
Yeah, he's in our office earlier.
We just heard about the mouse this morning. Cover your candy and goodies.
It got on your payroll, is it?
No.
He's been catching mice like crazy.
From a spy.
He's undocumented anyway.
If there's anyone that would like to address the Commissioners, can do it at this time? No, the young man, well, okay, go ahead.
No, I'll have him go first.
Yeah, please identify yourself when you get up and where you're from.
Sure. My name is Matt Rolfe. I'm an attorney in Chardon, and I also serve on the Chardon Park and Recreation Board, and that is an advisory board to council where there are citizens who take the needs and desires of the community as it relates to recreation issues, and we advise council and discuss issues that are of importance to the community, mostly related to Mel Harder Park, and the pool, and some of the other facilities that we have. You know, as the husband of somebody who graduated from Ohio State, I can say before I begin that sometimes they don't keep those straight.
Oh.
Because my wife did not get her graduate degree for a long period of time while the administration sorted it out. But just very briefly, I wanted to come here today and encourage the Commissioners to consider granting the easement for the bike trailer in Chardon along the property on Center Street. This is a project that I feel is a good project for the community, not only for the city of Chardon, but also for all of Georgia County. It's something that's funded, it's something that is not necessarily a financial burden for the county to grant. And although I haven't really looked at the engineering plans, I'm hopeful that it would not impact future snow storage on the property. Hopefully that could be worked out. But I view it as a project that will help bring tourism to Chardon. A good example of that is the twenty-mile drop race that is going to be here in the spring, that's going to use the bike path as it's completed to Fifth Avenue. And so these are things that will bring people to Chardon, as well as be a benefit for the people in the community. I have two children, and I view that having that completed bike path will increase access for them and other kids to both parts of the bike path, and will just make it safer for people to ride bikes, run, walk, and also cross-country skiing winters. So I just wanted to come and voice my support for that as a constituent, and I hope that you guys will consider it.
Thank you, thank you, Matt. I believe we received a letter from the city, last meeting or the meeting before, that we acknowledged it, and we, it's still, it's still in play, if that's the word I want to use, it's still on the table, but it's, no, no, that I'm aware, no final decision has been made by the Commissioners at this time. But it's, I would say it's not a dead issue, all right? I have to be as vague as I can be.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, thank you.
Sir?
Yeah, my name is Alan Segidie, live down in Bainbridge. I'm a person of disabilities, I'm one of the last people to receive a draft notice in this county, and I think I deserve a little respect for this county. This county has been bullying me for the last ten years. They do things that are against the law. We have people in high offices that take your property away because the notary's term expired, if you can believe that. It's all in black and white in the courts. You know, nobody wants to call and get an investigation done on here, in case you don't know.
We're not sure what you're speaking of.
I understand. I'm giving it a number to the FBI and Department of Justice, I'd like you to put in an investigation. You can go to the courthouse, everybody knows about it. I've talked to David in the past, and he explained, it's out of your realm, but when there's corruption in a county, you gotta do it. You can't take a person's property away just because the notary's term expired in this county. But they can do it with their little court at the courthouse.
So whose property is being taken away, Mr. Segidie?
Mine.
Your property, because?
Because the notary's term expired when he notarized deeds. And can you also tell me, tell you how good the court is up there? How can they put three different pieces of property in a foreclosure sale?
Is it because taxes aren't paid?
No, that's another question. There's two things, there's two actions. That's how these people bully you. And I'm tired of it. You know, I will come and have a private session with you and show you, but you cannot take a person's property away, and a judge threatens you, we're not going there, which means I'm gonna throw you back in jail if you go file corrective deeds, what the law requires.
Is it about a deed that isn't properly written?
No.
Or is it because there's back taxes on it?
No, it's because the notary's term expired, it was eighty-some years old. That's like me taking your property away.
Because of a notarized.
Right, which is totally illegal in this state. All right? And all I ask you to do is initiate an investigation. There's corruption, all right? There is another issue about property taxes. My property went up for sheriff's sale. My brother owned a piece, I owned a piece, and my brother and I owned a piece. You can't hook those all three up in the same sheriff's sale. And you guys are.
Are they on the same parcel?
They're the same ten acres.
And it's the one parcel number?
No, it's three parcel numbers.
There's three separate parcels.
So that's three different owners entities. But in Georgia County, you know, it was explained to me, it's their kingdom in the courthouse, they can do anything they want. All I'm asking you to do is investigate, have those people do an investigation.
This is Bainbridge, right?
Bainbridge.
And the addresses? Can you give us the address?
Seven, seven, oh, seven, Country Lane. But I put my name on there, you go to the courthouse and you can read stuff, you know? Now go to the sheriff's sale, too. There are people that lie to the judge, the judge believes the lie, you know? According to the law, I satisfied the taxes with the treasurer's office, but I never even got a hearing, it, for a foreclosure action.
Did you hire someone to represent you?
No, I couldn't afford it. I'm a disabled veteran, I'm on a pension. You know my property taxes are two-thirds of my pension? I can't afford to pay my taxes.
I'm just wondering if our Veterans Services might help you?
We've had a discussion with them over it there, they can't do nothing.
They can't do anything to help you?
Let's go to the next step, okay? But you can ask any questions you want. All right? I finally turned sixty last year, that puts me in the Georgia Senior Group, where I'm entitled to a, this year it's three hours worth of legal work, last year it was three hours, too. I go in there with the problem of, you know, the guys are doing this thing on corrective deeds and everything. I have some of the worst deeds in the world in there, nobody notices. You know, but I tell, I raise my hand, everybody knows about them, but I never got a notice that this flyer you guys put out said, what, before I get confused. And I got confused.
You're talking about the deeds?
Oh, I'm talking about your lawyer system for the county, for, I'm gonna give you a name.
I'm talking about Schrafton King.
Schrafton King, right.
Schrafton King?
They do legal, they are the ones that do legal assistance for the seniors.
Okay, so Schrafton, that's for the Department of Agent, right?
Right. Now see, I've gone through that program twice. All they want to do is talk to you, they don't do nothing. But I'm the only person in Georgia County, according to those people over there, that is dissatisfied with Schrafton King, which aren't even in this county anymore. Put in a public records request, show me the contract with them, nobody knows. Show me how much you paid them last year. They send you to another department, they send me to the auditor's office, I gotta file something. You probably don't even get a copy of it, but they do use your letterhead.
Well, Department of Agent uses the letterhead because they're under the Commissioners.
Right, right. So that's one of the reasons I'm here. It's just flat-out bullying, you know? And they want to talk, I just went through it with the same guy. There's a thing you send out that says, let's fix these upon debt deeds. Everybody knows my brother lawyer did his upon debt deed wrong. And first of all, you can't make me take property I don't want. See? But you gotta do it right. But the judge lets the lawyer walk into the court and convince my sister to pay the taxes off, and then the court is totally over with. That's the second time the money got paid to the county, because they made a settlement with me without even knowing they did it, no day in court, you know? That's why I'd like an investigation started, you know? I fought communism in Europe, and I got it in my county, you know? I'm not shooting hot air, it's all in the courthouse, you know? It's in the Supreme Court, you know? Another thing is, so I'm asking, and I'm gonna do more on that, I picked up my public records request here, is these people don't have a contract, they used to be in Georgia County, they went out to Schrafton King, you know? And if I'm the only one that they did nothing for, there's something wrong there, because all I want to do is corrective deeds. I filed in the court to send it to probate, my brother's dead, okay?
So this was a property that was transferred down to you from your brother?
No. It was transferred from my father to me and my brother years ago when he died.
Okay, and that's when the problem came into place?
No, the problem came into place is because my brother hired a lawyer that doesn't know what he does.
The lawyer screwed it up. The lawyer screwed it up.
And the lawyer messed up the upon debt deed, all right? I cannot borrow money on the property. I can't sell the property.
So, it wasn't an estate by entiaries? It was, you had to go through probate with it?
No, it has to go through probate.
It has to go, because it wasn't an estate by entiaries, or you weren't in a, um...
But it went to foreclosure, and I put a motion in to have the deed that my brother put in, the upon debt deed, stricken and have the judge send it to probate to see who's going to pay the taxes. Why shouldn't my brother pay the taxes? He used it as a write-off after he died off his income tax. That's what the law says. But I get tired of getting beat on, you know?
So, it wasn't in trust? It wasn't in estate by entiaries? You're saying that the deed did not transfer?
No, no, the deed is no good.
It has to go right to the deeds, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
You guys hired a company to say the deed is no good.
We hired them.
And they stepped, well, it's one of those title search companies on a foreclosure. And they say it's no good, but your new program hasn't even picked that up yet. And then meanwhile-
Well, the new program, the, the Good Deeds Program was to inform people when you have a deed. I mean, I don't know about all you folks, but many years ago, when I bought my first home, I made sure it was estate by entiaries. My husband passes away because mine automatically. But since then, I put it all in trust. When your deed is in trust, but you have to fund that trust. You have to put all your monies in it. You have to put your checking accounts. You've got to put everything into your trust.
Oh.
A lot of people will build a trust, but they don't put everything into it. And if someone, then like, for example, my mother had that when she died, I didn't have to go through probate, because everything of hers was in trust. And it was very quickly, you know, done.
Oh, right, I understand.
So, that's what the Good Deeds Program is about, to, to put your property and your ownership things into an, into a vehicle that will allow for a very quick dispersal.
Well, I know, but if it's improperly done, and you guys are paying these people over three hundred dollars-
So, you're saying the guys that we paid for, for the Department of Aging, screwed up your deed?
No.
No.
They, they didn't want to help me.
They didn't want to help?
They took your hundred and fifty dollars, though.
And they didn't do anything?
Twice.
Okay, well, well, you know, all we could do is check into this, Mr. Sagety.
You have Shrafton King mentioned. You have the Department of Aging.
Right.
Yeah.
They know I'm working on this, because I put in public records requests.
Okay.
Who else in the, in the county would you have, you know, talked to?
What judge are you, you're going to probate? Is that where?
No.
Or, or, or Common Pleas?
I'm not allowed to say what judge.
Common Pleas? I mean, it's gotta be one of three.
I would go in the big building, either floor.
The big building? You mean the big, the big courthouse?
But I can't tell you which judge. It's illegal for me right now.
The judges do what they have to do according to law.
No, according to law, that's all I'm saying, but they bully me, you know?
So, what other county, county, ah...
People that bullied me?
No, office holders that you dealt with, with this, that, that-
The treasurer, the prosecutor's office.
You talked to the prosecutor?
The, the sheriff, that was just here. I went to him, told him, "You know, there's grand theft involved. When you steal quarter million dollars' worth of property and divide it amongst yourself," and the first case where they did, stole the property, was a, what did it called? Where, where you have a corporation and they want to break the corporation up. Dissolution.
Dissolution.
Right. And they gave me a guardian alightum because of my disabilities that did nothing for me. Can't give you his name, though, but it's in the courthouse.
So, you're unhappy with the, the folks that were supposed to represent you?
No, I'm unhappy with the people that are supposed to protect me.
Protect you, but-
Because I'm supposed to go in there and be my own lawyer and everything. You go be a lawyer. You may be a lawyer. I don't-
No, stay away from me.
Well, that's where, I, I, I'm, I'm not-
But you have the right to say here something wrong, and I called the FBI up.
See, the only problem is, if your deed, the way your deeds re, it, it, you know, most people should look at their deeds. I'll tell you, this is a serious problem. Because if you, if you will things to people, you better make darn sure that you have that deed set in entiaries or you have it in trust. Because if that does not happen, you're going to go through a lot of probate. And if that deed is not done right, I, I mean, this can cause you, I can see, I, I, I don't know for sure, but I'm just listening to you.
That's the second part.
Yeah, there's more to it.
The first part is because there's groups up there in Chardon-
They can only follow-
The law.
Right.
They don't follow the law.
So, you, you-
The prosecutor's office lies to the judge. You don't get a day in court with the judge. What happened to my constitutional rights? Why didn't we send a pledge of allegiance to that flag?
Okay, so you, you're maintaining you, that you've been wronged this way?
Several times. Every time you turn around, I'm being wronged right now, because the Joga County senior thing, you know, I could have had three hours' worth of work last year. They took a hundred dollars.
I'm, I'm not sure. I know that lawyers, one thing I do know about lawyers, they got this little tallying system for hourly rate that they use.
Yeah.
And you might talk to them for twenty minutes, and when you get the bill, it's kind of like ten hours, you know?
Right, right.
I mean, every time I've ever said, I mean, and then they itemize it all, and it's like, gee, I've been talking for twenty minutes.
When, when you-
But they do research, and they do a lot of other things that go into the charges.
Well, it doesn't matter. Those people only charge a hundred and fifty dollars for the hour of talk.
Well, that'd bad for three, what, for three hours?
Well, yeah, but they have a thing, but nobody has the contract. Show me the contract.
But see, three hours is like nothing.
We, we can't, I mean-
You paid your bill.
This is the first I'm hearing of this.
Yeah, we, we're like trying to understand.
I'm not going to comment on anything, because I don't have-
I understand, but if you want to talk to me, if you want to see evidence, or you could go pull a file, or I'll get somebody to donate the fifty dollars, and you can have the whole case filed and take it home and read it. It's criminal, but what does the Justice Department tell me?
But you went to prosecutor. My prosecutor's the guy, I would think.
Well, didn't he get elected and went to Columbus?
No, that's a different prosecutor.
No, our prosecutor's a good guy. He, he'll listen.
Yeah, right.
Jim Gray, you're talking about Dave Joyce?
And how long ago did you go to the prosecutor?
Okay, well, he's no longer here. He is in, he's in Washington.
Right, that's where he was.
But the new prosecutor, Jim Gray's-
Oh, I haven't talked to anyone.
You've got to talk to him.
You know, it's New Year's resolution. Time to shake the tree.
Shake the tree.
I'm shaking the tree.
Okay.
You know, I want to see if anybody cares. The Justice Department says, "Well, we're not saying they didn't do nothing wrong, but," you know, because I got a letter on that. "Well, we don't have any money."
So, this is the-
"But we figure if you call them up, you got more thomp than me." And the FBI has files, and the Justice Department has files, but if you don't care about criminal activity where they're stealing property from veterans in this county, maybe I'm in the wrong thing. I should be at the TV station.
So, they're taking your property now? Is that what you're saying?
They already took it. They sold it to somebody.
Oh.
But not my foreclosure property.
Just one of them.
Yeah. See, the guy that bid on the foreclosure property was dead within a week, because of bad karma, you know what I mean?
Bad karma?
Yeah.
You've dealt with the recorder, the auditor, the treasurer? You've dealt with all of those folks, right?
The sheriff.
The auditor, treasurer, prosecutor, and sheriff.
Tried to have appointments, and I've talked to Joyce over the telephone, you know what I mean?
Well, Joyce is no longer.
I understand, but he was, you know? And all I'm saying, if there's criminal activity, I would raise my hand and say it.
It sounds like several years. I mean, Joyce was in the long-
Yeah, how, how long has this been, how long have you been, has this been going on for you?
Well, I figured they're just waiting for the statute of limitation to run out.
Well, that didn't answer the question. How long has it been going on?
Since two thousand five, six, when they tried, took over my company, and my, my partner died. You know what I mean? See, well, when it's done, I think in two thousand eight, the property was sold. They kept all the money. Me and my partner owned a business that was worth a half a million dollars. I got nothing from it.
So, you didn't go through chapter thirteen or-
They kept it.
Did you go through?
I can't, I, it would-
Did you go through chapter thirteen, or do you go through some bankruptcy procedures at all?
No.
I just wondered.
It went through. My partner wanted to get, my partner's lawyer didn't like my, ah, way I was running the business, so they put it in for, to get rid of it. You know, even though I offered him more money than they got, but, you know, we're talking about Blusso, you know?
You clearly have more than one issue. I mean, there are, there are a stack, a stack of problems and, and, and-
But it all revolves around bad people up there. And, and yes, I just had a lawsuit filed, and I'm with Judge Fury again, who should be in jail, but, you know? He's a judge, you know? Oh, I wasn't supposed to say his name. Sorry.
Well, we only have four judges in Joga County.
I mean, I will, I, I, I will look into this. I'm sure we will, and I say we, but we will, we'll look into it. But you have us at a disadvantage, because I don't know what's been done, who you've, who you have or haven't talked to.
Yeah, beyond, if I may interrupt you right now.
Sure, go ahead.
I am on your to-call list. You know, I started two weeks ago trying to get, but you were out of town. And then, you know, we just like, well, this, and I said, "Well, I'll come visit you." Went better.
Come visit, yeah.
You know, but I'm more than happy to come visit you.
No, you have our attention now. It's just that we don't have, I, I, I mean-
All the particulars.
Yeah, I can't-
I understand.
But, you know, we got some particulars, where you're a disabled veteran. You have one property that was taken and it was sold. You have another one that's in foreclosure right now, and you feel-
Well, they also took my sister's piece of property.
Well, we're only worried about you.
I can't, she doesn't live in the county anymore, you know?
And I, I asked you who you dealt with, so I can talk to, talk to them, because I could, I could walk around all day talking to people, and they-
Don't just look at you.
And they didn't deal with you.
I know.
I want to know who you dealt with, so I can go and get the, the, ah, the answer from them.
Well, if I was, if I was an investigator, I'd take the name that's printed on the bottom of that paper and go to the court system and look for a foreclosure and look for a, um-
So, you want us to do the research?
LLC resolution, you know? Ah, because there's some things I can't tell you, because there are some things still working out there, but they're not working good, because I'm not a lawyer, and, ah-
Well, neither are we.
I bring it to your attention.
We're not lawyers. We, we only are here as, as-
Can ask questions, that's what I do.
Because when you don't go with the state attorney general, he says he's here to protect you. He's not here to protect me.
You mean, my divine has told you that?
Right, in his office.
That's interesting.
They, they defend, they, they, they're, they're your lawyers, you see what I mean? They're not my lawyers. They could care less about me.
Yeah, the legal system is tough to transfer through, especially in a-.
And the one thing, if you look up Blusso and Sagety in there, that will put you right into it.
Okay.
What is it?
Blusso, B-L-U-S-O. Now, I might have some information in this envelope. I haven't looked at it for a while. I can't, I had them send it back, which I have some of the things with you.
Well, we've got that name, and I-
Well, okay, we'll, we'll look into it.
Yeah, that's all we, I mean, we can't help you from this table today, so we've got this information. Thank you for bringing it to us.
It sounds pretty grim.
It is, but this is America. Communism runs rapid, you know? I've done other investigations, but, you know, there isn't enough money to do anything.
Well, that's, that's a point there.
And all I'm asking is for an investigation. I called the FBI up and-
What'd they say? Where, where a lawyer?
They said, "Go hire a lawyer."
Yeah.
You know, but, okay, ah, but I'd like you, well, I'm going to do a little more investigation. I'll get back to you. I don't mind doing an investigation, but, ah, with this law firm that nobody seems to have a contract with, and you guys are paying bills.
Well, I think we have a per-hour contract, per-hour memorandum of understanding.
It should be handed to me then, because I put in a public records request.
But you see, with the three hours, you're not going to get a very intensive eva, investigation for three hours of a lawyer's work.
I know, but you know-
I can guarantee you that.
These lawyers, and every other lawyer in this area, you don't throw dirt where you work. You know, they work in the courthouse. They're not going to do nothing against a judge, unless you want to retire currently. Okay, took up your time.
Thank you.
We can work on this further.
Well, thank you for your update, and we'll look into it. We definitely will do that.
Anyone else who wants, would like to address the?
Do what?
We're just visiting.
Just visiting?
Yeah, we just want to see what you're getting to.
Who are these people?
Okay, but I, I said earlier, we had some unfamiliar faces in, in the audience. So, if you want to address us, go, go ahead. I mean, if you have an issue-
We welcome you.
But if you're-
Want to tell us who you are?
Yeah, I do.
Sure. I'm Mary Ann McLean. I live in, in Joga County, in Chardon.
Oh, Mary, well, thank you.
Myland Cable, and I live in Chester, Monson. We run Berkshire Hills.
Oh, wonderful.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to say, it used to be Pebblebrook or something, you, you know?
A few years ago, yeah.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, when I lived there.
So, you're dating yourself.
Well, I am dating myself.
Welcome to our meeting.
Last year was our fiftieth anniversary.
Yeah.
Of Berkshire.
Ah, it's Berkshire, right. I remember-
I've had a few parties there.
Friends caddying there when it was Pebblebrook.
You don't look old enough to remember Pebblebrook for this.
Oh, he's old. He just, we won't tell you how old, but he's old.
Thank you. Thank you for the compliment. I don't look that old. I appreciate that. We have the acknowledgements on, on our agenda here of the dog warden's report and the county building department's report.